From J.D. Martin to lead us in prayer, and then if you'd all remain standing and join us in the pledge immediately following.
Let us bow our heads. Return and listen for Father, we ask that you guide this meeting and be with each and every one of us, and let us repeat the Lord's Prayer together. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever and ever.
I feel like pulling it down off the wall and draping myself in it after the Olympics. It's been a pretty good run right now, and I like the show patriotism we've been seeing for the most part. We're going to move on to item two, awards and presentations. If patrol officer Jermaine Johnson and our police chief Leslie Mannahan would join me at the front, and anybody that would like to join Officer Johnson at the front, please come forward as well.
I have the distinct honor and privilege to introduce tonight to you all the employee of the month for this month for the city of Valdosta, Officer Jermaine Johnson. Officer Johnson has been with our department now for five years after coming to us after retiring with 22 years of service to the Air Force. So as you see, he's got a commitment to service to not only his community, but to also his nation. During his career with us, Officer Johnson's been a patrol officer, a field training officer. He's been part of our recruitment team and also part of our honor guard. For the past year, he's been one of our traffic unit officers. So he does an outstanding job out there preventing speeding and seatbelt usage, all that kind of stuff that people love. But in May of this year, Officer Johnson and several officers in the fire department responded to a structure fire at apartments on East Park Avenue. The apartments were totally engulfed. Officers and firefighters were going around trying to evacuate people. Officer Johnson came across an elderly woman that was in the second story, and when he got up to her, she's non-ambulatory, so she couldn't move, she couldn't get out, she couldn't get down the stairs. And thinking outside of the box and thinking very quickly, he found a chair in the house, and he was able to get her on the chair, and with all their officers' help, they were able to carry her down the stairs without giving her any injury and getting her out of the apartment safely, and risking his life and others' lives in doing so. So for that and many, many more reasons, I could sit up here for days and talk about Officer Johnson. He's incredible. That's why he has been selected as the employee of the month.
Officer Johnson, this is for you to hang proudly in your office or your home, anything in my car. Your car, that is your office. This is also for you. It's a way of the city thanking you, and spend it wisely, please. And this will go in the hall and forever honor you inside city hall as well. So congratulations. Thank you. You are a hero cop. Thank you very much. We could do that with our law enforcement every month, but we have to share the wealth with the other departments, so please understand. They do a good job, too. Item three, we're going to approve the minutes from last meeting. Council's had time to review the minutes from the July 22 regular meeting. Are there any deletions or additions at this time? Hearing none or seeing none, the minutes are approved by acclamation. We'll move on to the public hearings portion of tonight's agenda. Item A, consideration of an ordinance for a conditional use permit for a car wash and quick oil change business in a community commercial zoning district. Matt Martin will present. Matt, how are you doing?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. All right. First request is a conditional use permit by S.H.J. Construction Group. This is for property located at 3205 Inter Perimeter Road. It is owned community commercial. It is also located in the urban commercial corridor overlay district, and they are proposing what they call an auto spa, which is a car wash married with a quick oil change facility under one campus. In your package, you have many items, including maps showing the zoning patterns of the area. You notice the CC zoning along this part of Inter Perimeter Road on the north side, and that is because of the residential neighborhood and uses behind it. Character area, a community activity center, which is what we call the five points area of the city, denotes more intensive zoning patterns than you see in other parts. Aerial imagery, subject property, used to be the T3 outdoors, I believe a rental center facility. It is from many years ago, and as you can see even in the aerial, an awful lot of pavement that is there. The applicants are proposing to completely demolish the site. That would be the buildings and the pavement, and starting from scratch. In your packet is a site plan that shows the car wash in pink, the main building with the tunnel style car wash on the right, like we talked about at the work session. The noisy end of the car wash is toward Inter Perimeter Road that is on purpose by the applicant, trying to be respectful of the neighborhood. And then the vacuum area, which is, I think, 16 different compartments, all under roof. And then the air pumps for those, again, on the south side of the building away from the neighborhood. And then oil lou, quick change facility is up near Inter Perimeter. And you see how it all ties together under one site circulation. They're actually proposing to reduce the amount of impervious surface. Of course, they have to comply with all new development standards, including landscaping. In your packet is their proposed landscape plan, which is over and above what the city requires. They will tell you that they take pride in the amount of landscaping that they do on their sites, and that they usually win community awards. This is a format has been in other cities in South Georgia. Car wash building elevations. In your packet, you see this is the main building, a little nicer than many of the existing car washes that we have. Oil change building, basic commercial building there. Subject property, again, wall-to-wall pavement, some older buildings from yesteryear. From the back of the property, this is in the back corner on the right, looking forward, and you really see just how much pavement there is there to be removed, and no room but improvement, really. Adjacent properties, this is the office complex to the west, this Zaccodis property to the east, and then across Inter Perimeter, you have some mini storage and some other commercial uses. And then a closer look of that rear buffer area. Remember from the work session, that was the point of focus with staff to protect the neighborhood and mitigate any impacts that there might be. But this is looking from the Zaccodis side of the fence. The chain link fence you see here, and here is six feet tall. The wooden fence is eight feet tall, but like you see in this picture, the rear property corner is inside the fences, which means the fences are on the residential side of the property line, and you see what I call the South Georgia jungle. This looks like Lagostrum to me. And that's reflected in the conditions. So it's a conditional use. It's reviewed under conditional use review criteria, which are there in your packet, with the site plan. And planning commission is recommending approval of this subject to four conditions, and they are as follows. Number one, approval shall be granted for an automotive car wash and quick oil change business facility in CC zoning, in general accordance with the submitted site layout plan. Number two, the required landscape buffer yard along the north property line shall include the existing vegetation to be fully maintained. Three, hours of operation for these uses shall be within a daily timeframe of 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. And then lastly, number four, conditional use approval shall expire after two years from the date of approval if building and site development plans have not been approved and there is no request for building permits by that date. Be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Counsel, any further questions you didn't get a chance to ask at the work session? Seeing none, this is a public hearing. I will now ask if there's anybody that would like to speak in favor of this request, that please come forward at this time, state your name and address for the record. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman. My name is Jack Langdale, 701 North Patterson Street. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Title Wave and S.H.J. Construction. Matt did an excellent job explaining the details of the project. I'll try not to repeat much of what he said. I do want to touch again that the applicant takes great pride in the landscaping and the appearances of his facility. They are doing more than is required by the zoning standards, and the undisturbed buffer in the back will be left just as it is, and in consideration for the neighbors who we've communicated with. There is a fence that meanders along the line, is partially on the property that will be acquired by the applicant and partially on their property. The fence and the buffer area will be left completely undisturbed. I've enjoyed representing this company, Title Wave and S.H.J., and their project manager is here tonight, Marty Murphy, who I'd like to introduce and allow him to come up and tell you a little bit about the company and the project.
Please.
Thank you.
I don't even have to say if there's anybody else that would like to speak in favor of this request. Come on up.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Counsel, and Mr. Martin, thank you for the presentation. As Mr. Langdale had explained to you, I am Marty Murphy. I am residing in 124 East Thompson Street in Thomaston, Georgia. Title Wave Auto Spa has been in business since 2004. The year 2009, Mr. Scott Blackstock, the owner of Title Wave, received the Small Businessman of the Year for the state of Georgia, and that was a big accomplishment for him, seeing that this was a new company that he had started. And since that point in time, we currently have 70 car washes open, with the plans to increase by approximately 400 more in the next five years. Valdosta is a market that we've looked at for a couple of years, and we finally decided that we found a piece of property we felt was suitable for the car wash, that we felt like would be of a value both for the city of Valdosta and for Title Wave to create that partnership. As Mr. Martin has explained to you, we are a company of pride. Our company is a family-run company. We pride ourselves on three criterias is basically where we built our model off from. We want to be the nicest-looking business that city of Valdosta has. We're not your typical car wash that you're used to seeing, just some block buildings with some equipment or loitering and stuff like that. Our operations are professionally run, and we create a business that the facade of the building, the landscaping, and the way this property is maintained will be a standard of which Valdosta probably would use in the future to reference new businesses coming in to create their model after ours. We pride ourselves on customer service. You know, Chick-fil-A likes to think they have the best customer service. We'd like to think we've got the best customer service. You know, we have approximately 24 cameras on site that monitors our locations. They're not just monitoring for security purposes at night when we're not there, they're making sure that our employees greet you and provide you that service that you deserve if you're going to be a customer of ours. And so that's kind of what the reason for that is, and another reason is just for your security. If you pull up and the car is damaged by the car wash in some way, and it happens, we have computer, I mean, a camera coverage that would show that, hey, we did the damage and we take care of that. We're a company that we are proud of who we are and proud to be a partner here in Valdosta. We're a big contributor to local charities and organizations. We create fundraising opportunities for churches, youth groups, bands. The way that program works is that for every, if you want to sell 100 tickets, the car washes, the ticket is worth a $20 value. That ticket is sold to the organization for $5. The organization sells it for $10, but the end user has a $20 car wash. So it's really a value for everybody. And Mr. Blackstock started several years ago. The third Thursday of the month of September, all proceeds go to a local charity. He has a special needs son, and so that's one of his big things, he likes to give to those special needs organizations in those communities. I want to touch on just quickly the landscaping. We do go above and beyond that landscaping. It's just another portion of who we are to create that, I don't want to say country club atmosphere, but that's what it creates. We go above and beyond with the landscaping. So I won't bore you with any more of the details about Title Wave. I'm here for any questions, and thank you for your time for this consideration.
Counsel, do you have any questions for Marty?
You say you're a big contributor to enhancing Valdosta. Would you be interested in joining our back-to-school program here at the city next year?
I'm sure that our company would be very interested in joining anything that we can be of service to this community. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Marty, thank you. Are there any other people in attendance that would like to speak in favor of this request at this time? Seeing none, are there any that would like to speak in opposition at this time? Please come forward.
My name is Ben Mimi. I live at Seven Clark Circle, which is one of these two here. My neighbor's name is Ann Smith, and I've talked to her a little bit. I've actually talked to everybody around the circle there a little bit, and we have a couple concerns, and somebody was really good and sent me this, the paper with all this stuff, and I don't understand it all, guys. But I have two issues that I wanted to talk about. The first one is the timeframe that you've set in this. The conditional, the first, I don't know what I'm reading, guys, so don't. First conditional thing, the second thing that says, the third one, I mean, that says hours of operation between 7:00 and 9:00. Well, if you turn over a couple pages, and I don't know what this was, turn over to page four, it says no significant impact if it's from 8:00 to 8:00. And I don't know how to make the first conclusion on that with this. I'm really interested in 8:00 to 8:00 being what you tell them to do, at least for a while, to figure out what's going on. Because there's a lot of difference, guys, between somebody doing something from 7:00 to 9:00 and doing it from 8:00 to 8:00. And particularly, just think about, this is, if I went over and stood against that wall, that would be my fence, and you saw my fence. So this is going to impact, we're going to feel it right there. Zaccodis lights shine in my kitchen and shine in my bedroom if I don't cover them up. Now, if the lights are that high, we may have a problem. The other question I have is I've looked at this, somebody was really good and sent me all this stuff, and I can't figure it all out. But it sounds to me like we have a writing that the 10-foot buffer is going to be there as it is, and we're not going to do anything. But it doesn't jive with me within going in there and taking everything down and making the back look really nice. I think they're going to take all those trees that are in that buffer out. And that's my other big question, and it's actually Ann's big question, because it's going to expose, it's going to expose me to a lot of the sound and light. Because I can tell you what, right now, we've lived there, we've owned the property since 2006, and we've lived there since 2012. And when we built that fence, we built it eight foot tall, and there was in between that fence and the next little fence, which is about a foot and a half, so there were some trees growing in there, and we didn't want it all coming over that. And we had all those trees taken down, so there are new trees in our area of that, which means if all the trees on the other side are taken down, we're not going to have any protection from the sound or anything that's going on. So I'm just trying, one of my basic things right now is to figure out, because when I read both of these things, the intent, and when I read you, it sounds like to me that we're going to leave the buffer and leave that wall, that fence that is always built there that has a little, I don't think that's going to happen. I think they're going to remove all those plants there. I've tried to, I've tried to look at the design and figure it out, and the bottom thing that says trees there is cut off of the PDF file that I have, so I don't know what they're going to do. Is there any answer to that question?
Ben, I had heard that they were going to leave the buffer. Matt, if you'll come back up for just a second. Think you understood that to be left as well, correct?
Yes, sir, and the condition would require that. What he's referring to is if you look at page four in your packet in the staff report, you know, conditional uses have a conditional use review criteria, and on page four, if you look at item number six, which is about one-third of the way down, it gives you that particular criteria. The applicant writes a response, and then staff writes a response under it. What he's referring to is the applicant's response. The proposed use will have limited hours of operation from 8:00 to 8:00 to reduce the impact on adjoining properties. In your packet is the letter of intent from the applicant. That's their proposed hours of operation to be open to the public. Staff's recommendation in that of the planning commission was to add an hour at each end so they can clean up and set up and put bookends on the end of it. It doesn't restrict them from operating within a shorter timeframe. It's just that's the maximum.
Ben, does that answer both your questions?
That was, that answers that question, but it doesn't answer the buffer question.
All right. The buffer question, there is condition number three, which I think is the one that talks about leaving the existing vegetation as the required buffer yard.
Yep, that's what I heard.
One of the things to remember, this property is owned community commercial. It allows a wide range, variety of commercial uses that do not require conditional use approval. For example, Zaccodis next door. If one of those wanted to operate here, or a huddle house restaurant, or a waffle house, they could go into the site, no public hearing, just a site plan. If they wanted to, they could cut down the entire buffer that's there now and plant back a new buffer yard that meets code, except it's not full grown vegetation. And there would be no limit on hours of operation.
Gotcha.
Just standard development rules would apply. The only reason this is a conditional use is because these uses have the potential to make a little extra noise, and hence the review, but it's not the only thing in CC zoning that can produce noise.
Good. Matt, thank you very much.
So let me understand. Is the buffer going to be left or go? Is it going to be?
The requirement is that buffer that's there stays there with the fences and the full grown evergreen vegetation that's there.
It stays.
You're talking about all the trees that are in front of that fence, that six-foot fence?
That.
All those trees that are going to be left?
That's existing.
Along that whole, that side there?
That's what.
That whole side, okay. Okay. That's, that's one of the things that I want left, guys, and I'm not sure it's going to happen. I think they're going to take them all out and put a new planted buffer there. That's, that's my, the 8:00 to 8:00 thing, I, there's about 30 of these that you can easily find that are in Georgia, and there's only four 8:00 to 8:00s. So I have no doubt that they're going to work, they're going to be 7:00 to 9:00 unless you say it'll be 8:00 to 8:00. And that's, to us, that's a huge difference, because it's an hour in the morning and an hour at night. That's all I can tell you, guys.
Ben, thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in opposition to this request? Seeing none, I'm going to turn it over to counsel for action.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the request as presented, including the conditions.
Have a motion and a second. Counsel, any further discussion?
I have a question. He asked about the lighting going in his bedroom and his bathroom. Could we do anything? Because he is a senior citizen. Can we do anything to help him with the lighting?
That would be a-
Not going in his bathroom?
I'll just state that that would be a separate issue. That's dealing with Zaccodis. We've got to deal with the motion we have before us.
I'm not talking about Zaccodis until my, he asked the question, would this building have lights all around that's going to shine also?
I think Ben asked about, or stated that the lights from Zaccodis poured into his window, if I'm not mistaken. Have you heard different?
I did.
He did say Zaccodis lights shine in, and he also stated-
Okay, sorry.
He wanted to make sure that there were no lights in this new structure going to shine as well.
Okay.
I think they answered that issue a little bit at land, when you get into the land sign, that the lights are going to be at least directed away, but I think it's going to be as tall. And as long as that buffer stays where it is, we don't cut those trees down, there won't be an issue. Now, my next-door neighbor is really concerned.
Okay.
If those trees get cut down, it will block the light.
Okay, thank you, Ben.
This is a conditional use.
Yep, it's in there. All right. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Thank you. Unanimous. Thank you, counsel. We'll move on to item B, consideration of an ordinance to rezone 0.59 acres from single family residential, R15, community commercial, CC. Matt will again present.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. This one is a rezoning request, not a conditional use, but it is for property nearby along North Valdosta Road. It is probably the last piece of residential zoning along North Valdosta. It is between the Dollar General store and the In Client Law Office, which you see on the map, zoned RP. This is R15 property in between. It is a remnant of what was once planned to be a residential development along Castleberry Place, back when that was proposed to go all the way through to the main road. Those change, plans changed a long time ago, and the applicant is proposing to develop this property as a small restaurant and commercial zoning. It's, of course, the same character area as we were looking at before, but the aerial image shows its present state, which is a small open forest, kind of overlooked if you're not looking carefully as you come around the corner. In your packet, of course, is the boundary survey. It's only about 0.59 acres. The site plan, we originally had a tenant in mind that I think was a beverage store, like a Smoothie King with a drive-thru. That, I'm told, has fallen to the wayside, but there's other possibilities of a small restaurant with a drive-thru. So this same site plan would fit all of those scenarios. Everything fits on the site at this scale. Nothing really larger than this could fit there. One interesting thing to note is they would be sharing a driveway from the main road with Dollar General, so that's up in the upper-left corner there. Also, in the pictures, you get a little better view. This is from across the road, looking south at the subject property. You see that shared entrance there on the right side with Dollar General. Around it, we have, of course, other commercial development. This is a closer view of what it looks like. This is a closer view of what it looks like now. And then looking back to the north, that's Country Club Road where it comes in at North Valdosta on the curve, and then the law firm to the east, and then Dollar General to the west. This is a zoning change, so it stands for exercise of zoning power, which are there in your packet. One thing to note, the R15 zoning is non-compliant with community activity center. It is simply not intensive enough. So they're proposing CC zoning, which is in between the zonings that are there, and certainly fits the use that they're proposing. And with all of that, planning commission is recommending approval by unanimous vote.
Matt, thank you. Counsel, any questions for Matt? Matt, thank you. This again is a public hearing issue, so anybody that wishes to speak in favor of this request, please come forward.
Hi, my name's Jason Fritz. My address is 4151 Ashford Dunwoody Road, Atlanta, Georgia. I am the applicant for this project. The company I work for, Sullivan Wickley, we build about 20 to 30 build-to-suit projects across the southeast a year. We came across this property, kind of fell in love with this corridor. It's going through some rapid growth and noticed this is kind of an island of residential on a 20,000-car highway and thought the best, highest best use should be commercial. We did have a tenant in tow. It was Tropical Smoothie Cafe. They have reconsidered the market, so now we're working on a couple other different fast casual restaurants to go in this property. Mr. Martin did a great job going over everything, so I, you know, just, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them and...
Counsel, any questions? Jason, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor of this request? Is there anybody that would like to speak in opposition of this request? Seeing none, I'll turn it over to council for action.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve this request as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Counsel, any further comments? All in favor, show of hands. Unanimous. Thank you, counsel. Item C, consideration and ordinance to de-annex 310 acres from the city of Valdosta. As requested by Uvalde Land Company, the property is in the city portion of the Cherry Creek Wetlands Mitigation Bank property located between the Withelakouchi River and the Cherry Creek residential neighborhoods. Matt Martin will again present.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. This one is a little different kind of request. It's sort of an annexation in the backwards direction. As we talked about at the work session, this is the first time we've had a de-annexation proposal in exactly 10 years. This is a large tract of land. It's over 300 acres. It is owned R15 in the city limits. This particular map that's in your packet shows the zoning patterns around there, whether it be city or county. The city limits would be sort of hard to make out, except that the light shaded yellow areas that you see is what's in the city limits. To the west is the rest of the Withelakouchi River floodplain that has conservation zoning in the county. In your packet is a resolution of support from Lowndes County. That is something that is required by state law for the applicant to obtain before they request the annexation. In layman's terms, it is the county agreeing to take the property back if the city agrees to de-annex it. What has not happened yet to this point is an official discussion of what zoning the property would receive once it's in Lowndes County. That would have to be a separate process under Lowndes County jurisdiction. Other maps in your packet include character areas, parks and recreation, conservation. But in this one, the brown, dark green line is a different character area that we don't see very often, that is associated with the Withelakouchi River, River Channel. And that is the protected stream buffer that the state imposes along the river. Aerial imagery really shows more of the surrounding setting of what's there. You see the property as being all forest of some type, wetlands and uplands. And then on the east side is the Cherry Creek neighborhoods, as well as Cherry Creek North. And then on the west side of the image, you see a vertical line. That's Valdel Road on the other side of the river. And then you see some clear patches there on a street pattern. That's the River Chase neighborhood. We've received a lot of public input in terms of emails and letters. All that we've gathered is in your packet. I distributed a couple more pages this evening. I think some have also been emailed to you. But we've gotten those from residents not only in Cherry Creek, but also in River Chase, where it had spread to the other side of the county, side of the river. Also interesting environmentally, you see some dark areas within that forest. Those are some lime sink ponds that are there in parts, you can actually see the wider parts of the river channel as it goes through there. In your packet also is the survey. This is the Cherry Creek Mitigation Bank property in its entirety, which is about 530 acres. Most of it is in the city limits currently. That's the 310 acres that we're talking about, which is the right side vertical portion. And then the lower-left quadrant is the portion of that mitigation bank that is already in Lowndes County. This map also shows you where the wetlands areas are. The darker shaded tones is the jurisdictional wetlands that are under protection of Army Corps of Engineers. The white areas in between are the uplands area. All of this had to be carefully delineated when the owners about 20 years ago at that time were going through this process. I looked at part of a summer report of it, and if I remember right, with the total acreage, less than half of the property is jurisdictional wetlands. More than half is uplands. Doesn't mean it doesn't get damp when it rains real hard, but it is not under jurisdictional protection. Subject property has very little access. We talked about that at length of the work session. This is the entrance gate, I believe, on the south side. When you look at this map, you see a yellow finger off on the south end. That's where this subject property actually touches South Lake Shore Drive. It's not a right-of-way, it's not an easement. It's actually part of this property. And that's its only access to a public street, at least on a street that's open. It does touch the right-of-way that goes across the Mill Dam, but that's been, of course, closed to public use. But that's, everything else, it abuts houses or other open tracts of land. Other photos, this is the north side of the spillway. Looking southward, subject property is through the trees on the right. And then there's the mitigation bank signage that is there, and then the other sign, and then some of the homes of the Cherry Creek neighborhoods in the area. This is the Lake Cleve on Cherry Creek itself, and then some of the other homes. I know there's been lots of discussion. There's lots of information in your packet. Remember, this is not a rezoning decision or even a land use decision. It is simply a proposed boundary change to the city, whether we change it or not is the question, and then under what jurisdiction it would be. You also have a reformal request from the applicant to table this for two weeks. That's there in your, or being given to you. That was submitted after the planning commission meeting. I know there's a lot of citizens here this evening who I'm guessing many of those were also at the planning commission meeting. You can decide to take action on tabling or not early, or have the public hearing and then decide. All of those options are there at your disposal.
Any other questions for Matt, counsel?
Well, the other thing I would add is in terms of the recommendation on this from planning commission is they are recommending denial of the de-annexation by six to three vote.
Matt, thank you. We will revert with the public comment period due to the great interest and the great interest there was at the planning and zoning meeting as well. I will give each side 20 minutes, whether that's one person as your designated spokesperson or multiple, it's still the same 20 minutes. With that, would anybody would like to speak in favor of this request, please come forward? Is there anybody that would like to speak in opposition to this request? Please come forward. Please state your name, sir.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, I'm Jim Tunison, 908 North Patterson Street. I'm here on behalf of Cherry Creek Hills Property Owners Association. We ask for your consideration to deny this de-annexation request. Question before you is why would you decide to weaken permanent conservation restrictions that were put on this property permanently? The reason for de-annexation given to you in your request is for maintenance of wildlife and permitted, permitted recreational use, including hunting. Currently, the original land bank restrictions allow hunting and they allow planned burning, which is one of the, the main reason, the only reason I've heard at planning zoning at the planning commission is why the applicant would like this to be de-zoned and moved to the county. The applicant bought the property approximately 17 months ago with the agreement of all these restrictions placed on there. That is, the deed that he took included all of these land restrictions and was obviously agreed upon when he made the purchase. Clearly, they were on notice of all these restrictions and that they were all applied. The applicant now asks for your vote in helping him remove these restrictions that were agreed upon. Now, we recognize that this is a city council. You cannot affect the Corps of Engineer restrictions, but this is one step in the process. We, we know that the Corps of Engineer has been out there on the land with the applicant. A vote to de-annex a city property for a use that is now permitted does not seem to be a valid reason to give away 310 acres of city land. Any use that you allow or that Corps of Engineer allows is going to have access to this property through that one 40-foot strip that comes off of a residential city street. This property was put in a mitigation bank to allow the subdivision of Cherry Creek North to be built. So it doesn't seem proper to change the rules because you can't unbuild those houses. Why would you undo the rules under which they were built? Does the Corps of Engineers support this request? Now, of course, all of these parties were involved when the mitigation bank was agreed to, and these restrictions were put on this deed in 2001. That is, the developers, the Corps of Engineers, ultimately the UGA Foundation that took ownership of the property, the tax collector, and applicant that is before you. These were all on notice and bought in full agreement with these restrictions. The applicant agreed to these restrictions when he paid $200 an acre for the land in March of 2019. Why should you get involved with your vote to change the deal that all of the property owners agreed to themselves as parties? Now, in zoning, rezoning, annexation, de-annexation, all of these are frequently contested because they impacted change people's homes and neighborhoods. I think another reason that strong opposition to these requests arises because it generates a feeling that the government is breaking its promise. The promise was made when the land bank was created in exchange for the housing development permission. The parties to that promise were the landowners, the Corps of Engineers, the city zoning planning who acted on behalf of the citizens of Valdosta, and the buyers of the conservation credits. A residential planned community was built next to this mitigation bank property, only because of the agreement was it allowed to be built. Now, we are facing the effort to cause the agreement with the government to be broken. The way to break this agreement started with our friends at the county, and now it's up to each of you to decide where it goes. You should not rely, we suggest, on the Corps of Engineers and the federal government to protect our fair city. Did the Corps protect the citizens around the Everglades, the Lower Ninth Ward of New Orleans, or the Chesapeake Bay residents? Just to name a few. I do not think it would be smart for the city to give up its land in hopes that the Corps of Engineers and the federal government decide to keep these restrictions in place. The deed instrument does allow for the Corps of Engineer to modify or change the rules. They need your vote to start that process, and we ask you humbly not to give your protection of our city and its residents to the Corps of Engineers. Will you vote to break the conservation agreement promise? We ask you not to. In conclusion, no compelling reason has been given to break a promise with all these homeowners. No compelling reasons has been given to break the city's commitment in your comprehensive plan. Your comprehensive plan discusses the protection of waterways, recharge areas, and riverbanks. All of these are a feature of this property that was put in the mitigation bank for these various reasons. We ask you respectfully to vote to deny this de-annexation request. Thank you for your consideration.
Judge, thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to come forward and speak in opposition to this Again, please state your name.
Hello, I'm Ashley Lefiles-Hart. I reside at 1055 Ridge Road in the Cherry Creek Hills subdivision. May I pass out a sheet to each of you?
You can hand it over to Counsel McGibbs.
What we're passing out is actually an aerial shot of my family's home on Ridge Road. And if you look in the bottom-left corner, you can see the actual legend, the 100-foot legend. Now, if you'll take a look at our pool and our back porch, you can see that it's only about 120 feet from the property line that it shares with the mitigation bank. Mr. Warren has stated that he wants it de-annexed that he can hunt on the property, but I don't particularly feel comfortable with anyone firing, you know, discharging firearms within 120 feet of my pool where my son and my family spends most of our evenings during the summer, fall, and spring. That also begs another question. Mr. Warren stated that he only wants it de-annexed so that he can hunt with his son. And Mr. Warren looks pretty young. I'm wondering how old the son is, who he wants to be firing guns with immediately behind my backyard. Is this a 10-year-old, 12-year-old? I'm not sure. 18-year-old, maybe? I'm not comfortable with a child firing guns within the range of my child, if that makes sense. But I did have another point. Furthermore, it's my understanding, coming off of Jim's argument for the Army Corps of Engineers, that Mr. Warren's other developmental property, Northside Property Development, which is doing some work off of Valdel, from what I understand, they have already secured four acres of wetlands in the county to be developed. So I wouldn't put it past him to push development of this property also. This is a pristine piece of wetlands behind us. It feeds the river. It helps with flooding with erosion. It is habitat for endangered and threatened federal and state species. There are so many reasons that I could argue that it should not be de-annexed. I, I ask you to please vote that it's not.
Ashley, thank you.
What is your name again?
Ashley Hart.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak in opposition to this request tonight? Please state your name.
Oh, hi, I'm John Quarterman. I don't actually live in the city, but I get my mail here. And I'm the Swanee Riverkeeper, so I'm very concerned about waters, trying to keep them clean. And everything in this letter, which you probably already saw by email earlier, probably already know, but it's kind of my job to remind you of things. You're all aware that right across the Withelakouchi River directly west of Cherry Creek is Shadrack Sink, which famously leaks Withelakouchi River water down into the groundwater, which goes at least several miles east where Valdosta's water wells are on Gaster Road, which is why those water wells are as deep as they are. Because shortly after they were put there, it was discovered that, well, that river water is getting into the well water. So there was a choice. Pay for much more expensive equipment and treatment methods to deal with the tannic acid and the biological items in the water, or just make the wells deeper, which the city did. There's also another sinkhole right where Cherry Creek meets the river that opened up in a matter of months in 2013. And there's a whole line of sinkholes to the west of that. Land disturbance on this property could provoke more sinkholes. And I won't be surprised if there's actually sinkholes on the property now. That's, that's one problem. Simply any clearing of the land could contribute to more flooding. And this is Valdosta. I probably don't have to talk about the problems of flooding. is Valdosta. I probably don't have to talk about the problems of flooding. And of course, everyone's concerned about things getting into the river water, you know, affecting, you know, not only the city wells, but other people's wells downstream. So it's a very sensitive area. And for all those reasons, I would suggest that you do not DNX. You keep the part of it that's in the city in the city because that way you have more control over what happens to the property. In fact, I would recommend that you go farther. See if you can obtain the property. Because it would be a great addition for a series of trails alongside the Lithicucci River, Lithicucci and Little River Water Trail. So I don't know whether you could obtain it. I haven't worked out a plan. And of course, it would have to be done in consultation with the nearby property owners who have rights of use of that property in the covenant. And a series of trails down the river, you know, going as far as Troupa, where the city is talking about doing a Troupa River Camp and Troupa River Park, would not have to be continuous. So we're not talking about running it through the country club, for example. But it's something to think about. Like I say, I don't have a plan now, but it's an idea. Meanwhile, please, either today or when it comes back, please deny this annexation. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Thank you also for your stated trust in us. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in opposition to this request?
Jimmy LaFiles, thirty-five sixty-one River Taste Drive. So I'm a River Taste Drive resident, so I'm on the, kind of, the wooded side of the map there. My property, my back property line ends at the river. So I've been there twenty-eight years. I just want to make the point that, to me, this is a fairly simple decision. That piece of property was put in a mitigation bank twenty years ago to do exactly what it's done for twenty years. It protects these people's property from flooding. It protects these people. It keeps them safe. It minimizes dangerous activities on the property. And it provides a great habitat for a lot of important wildlife. There's many endangered species back there. So your decision tonight, if you decide to allow it in the DNX, you're destabilizing that situation. You're opening up a situation that might allow that to change, and now that land is not going to serve its intended purpose anymore. So it's not that complicated to me. I just, I want y'all to take that into consideration.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Anybody else in opposition?
Good evening. My name is Philip Walker. I live at nine fifty South Lake Shore Drive. I just wanted to state that I'm a citizen of Valdosta First and a resident of the Greater Lounes County Second. And y'all are my first line of, I guess, communication with other property owners that surround me. And if we ever have an issue with each other, we, you know, would have to resolve it between ourselves and the council sitting before us and the mayor. If y'all vote to approve this, that will change. All of the citizens along this piece of property would have to go to the county. They're second. So then it would be city versus county. I think the way it's set up is perfect. And, you know, if somebody wants to use the land differently than what it was intended for, I think there are steps that they can come to you and ask for variance and different ways to go about that. But I just wanted to let y'all know that I'm against it and I'm directly affected by it.
Mr. Walker, thank you.
Thank you.
What was his name?
Philip Walker, correct?
Philip Walker.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak in opposition?
I would like to, Clyde Thompson, nine forty-four South Lake Shore. I urge you to deny this.
Thank you, Clyde. Anybody else that would like to speak in opposition of this request? Seeing no more, I'll turn it over to council for action.
Mayor, while I don't know if it's going to make a big difference, but as usual, when an applicant asks for us to table a request for two weeks, we generally honor them. Again, I don't know if it's going to make a big difference, but they did ask and out of respect that we give all applicants, we will, I would like to make a motion that we table this request to our August nineteenth meeting.
I have a motion. I have a second.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further comments, council?
At the end of two weeks, will we have a public hearing over again?
If we come back in two weeks, there will not be a public hearing. That's what we held tonight.
It would now, okay.
Correct.
It should be a vote, correct?
Correct.
We'd just be voting, right? Yes or no?
Correct.
Okay.
All in favor of the motion, before you, show of hands. All in opposition? Thank you. Motion to table carries. We will address it again in two weeks. Move on to item five, ordinances and resolutions. Consideration of an ordinance for film production of the city of Valdosta. This is the first reading. Ashlyn Johnson, our amazing public information officer, will present. Thank you, everybody.
Just to remind you, we talked about this Tuesday night, but this is just the first reading of a film production ordinance that would allow us to put an ordinance in place and have a permit process for commercial films and TV productions when they come in town to protect our citizens that live here and work here daily, but also to help the films out and streamline that process. So if you guys have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Counsel, any questions for Ashlyn?
Do you want us to ask them tonight?
No, you're good.
Ashlyn, thank you. This is a first reading. There's no action to be taken. We'll see you again soon. Item B, consideration of a resolution to approve an amendment to the Georgia Municipal Employees Benefit System, Master Defined Benefit Retirement Plan. Chuck Dinkins, our finance director, will present. Hi, Chuck.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, thank you. This is an amendment to the retirement plan as we discussed Tuesday. It's basically just a housekeeping amendment to keep us in sync with the master plan that GMEB has, that GMA has installed. This is, adjusts some of the actuarial tables in the plan for early retirement discounts and that sort of thing. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Counsel, any questions?
What specific, what is the specific thing that you're going, that you're going to change?
Well, there's several actuarial tables in there. And that deals with if you retire early, how big a discount you would get on your retirement. So if you retire at full retirement age, you get a certain benefit. And the earlier you retire, the smaller that benefit gets. And this actuarial table adjusts, it makes that smaller as you go down. And this adjusts it as people live longer, they move those adjustments out. It also adjusts where if you have what they call a joint survivor. So if you say, I want to have a joint retirement with my spouse, so if I died, she would continue to get it for her lifetime, it changes the discount that would be applied to that. So in other words, I would get a smaller benefit for both of us than I would if it were just me.
Is that from this point on, or is that retroactive? That would be from this point forward. Counsel, any questions for Chuck?
Will we get a copy of that in writing so we can really look over it?
It's in here.
It's in the back.
The whole document is in the back.
I'm kind of lost on it, so I'll come to your office and talk about it.
Okay.
Your office?
Yes, ma'am. Chuck, thank you. All right, I'll turn it over to council for action if there's no other questions. Didn't think so.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the request as presented.
Second, you. A motion and a second. All in favor, show of hands. All in opposition?
Let's allow understanding.
Thank you. Motion passed. We found to item six, bids, contracts, agreements, and expenditures. Item A, consideration of bids for ninety-five-gallon rollouts, cart containers. The Public Works Department wants these, and Richard Hardy is going to present his case.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. This is a consideration of bids for ninety-five-gallon green rollout containers for our sanitation department within Public Works. The ninety-five-gallon rollout container contract expired on thirty June of this year. So it's time to reach out again to secure another contract and to move forward. The contract supplies the city with rollouts to provide for new customers and for damaged rollouts that needs replacing. Seal bids were received on May twenty-ninth with Auto coming in with the lowest bid for sixty-four dollars and eight cent per container. Several other vendors did not respond to the invitation to bid. The last contract price was forty-seven dollars and sixty-nine cent, which was awarded in two thousand and seventeen. So we've had this contract for approximately three-plus years. The city has used Auto in the past, but they were not the last supplier. The quality of the container has been tested to assure that it will work with our vehicles and it meets that our specifications. Staff recommends that Mayor, Council approve the low bid of Auto in an amount of sixty-four dollars and eight cent per cart and allow the Public Works Department to move forward with this purchase. Standing by for any questions or concerns.
Counsel, any question? Richard, thank you.
Thanks.
Turn it over to council for action.
May I make a motion that we approve the request as presented?
Second.
I've requested a second. Any further comments? None? All in favor, show of hands. Unanimous? Thank you, counsel. Move on to item seven, local funding and requests. Consideration of requests to declare two vehicles from the Valdosta Police Department as surplus property. Police Chief Leslie Mannahan will make her second appearance of the night.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The Citizens Against Violence Ministry approached the city about the possibility of purchasing two surplus vehicles from the city of Valdosta. And on Tuesday night, Councilwoman Miller-Cody hit the nail on the head. This organization is incredible to our community. It helps all of us. The city's partnered and provided surplus vehicles in the past to other agencies and other community partners after getting permission from council. This helps us build our city, develop our city, and continue to grow these partnerships. So we have identified two vehicles from the police department, a two thousand and three and a two thousand and five Ford Crown Victoria, which are former unmarked detective vehicles. They're no longer of service. They're no longer part of our fleet, and we have replaced them. So we're asking that council declare these two vehicles as surplus and allow the city to sell them to the Citizens Against Violence Ministry for a dollar apiece.
Counsel, any questions for our chief?
No questions. I want to make a motion.
Yeah, if you have any questions, I'll turn it over to Councilwoman Cody for a motion.
I make a motion, sir, that we approve this request as stated, sir.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. There's no further comments. All in favor, show of hands. Counsel, thank you. And I couldn't agree more with the chief. They do great work. They got great relationships in the communities that they protect. And we just honored them recently with a proclamation as well. So congratulations. Item eight, boards, commissions, authorities, and advisory committees. Consideration of an appointment to the Metropolitan Planning Organization Citizens Advisory Committee. The Metropolitan Planning Organization Citizens Advisory Committee had a member, Jim Parker, who resigned due to personnel reasons, excuse me, members of the NPO CAC serve at will. This appointment was advertised, according to the board's commissions, authorities, and advisory committee's policy, was adopted by mayor and council. The applicants are as follows. One, Tanner Harrington. Two, Eric Dawkins. We have one slot available and two applicants, so I'll now entertain nominations.
Mr. Mayor, nominate Tanner Harrington.
I have a nomination. Any further? Hearing none of? Yet. By acclamation, we re-approved Tanner Harrington with no further. Thank you. Now move on to item nine, citizens to be heard. This is the portion of the meeting. We ask you to come forward and state your name and address so we may have that for the record. Our policy requires you stay under three minutes so that others have time to be heard. Please direct all comments to council as a whole. Do not attempt to engage individual members of council in debate. It is our policy to follow through with you and your concern immediately after the meeting and beyond. Additionally, we ask that any groups that want to address the council designate one spokesperson to represent the group and their comments. Again, this will ensure that others have time to be heard. With that being said, is there any citizens to be heard at this time? State your name and please introduce the two very well-behaved children.
Debatable. J.D. Rice, five oh one Knoppe Hill Drive. Those are two of my, two of my grand boys. The other two are teenagers. Grandpa ain't so popular with those two. But I'm here tonight because I, two and a half years ago, I approached Mayor and Council about a proposal naming the senior citizen center on Park Avenue after Mrs. Ruth Kay Council. I was informed then that the city had deeded those buildings over to Valdosta Lounes Parks and Recreation Department. I then met with the director of the Parks and Recreation Department, and he informed me that I needed to speak to the board, which I did, and presented them with the same proposal that I had presented to Mayor and Council. A few weeks later, the board notified me through the director that they did not own that building, but it was belonging to the city. Since then, I've been in contact with City Hall about my request, which I presented a petition with over a hundred signatures on it. I'm just trying to find out some, what's the city's desire. Do you want to proceed with naming that building as Mrs. Council, or do you want to deny the request? And I know that the ordinance has some stipulations in there that typically, buildings and structures that are owned by the city are named after people who are deceased. But there have been some exceptions to that. There's three that I know of. And I'd just like to see that Mrs. Council receive her flowers before she's no longer with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, J.D.
Yes, sir.
We got any other citizens to be heard tonight? Seeing no others, we'll move on to the city manager's report. Mark Barber, our city manager to present.
Evening, Mayor and Council. More than likely, I hope you've seen that earlier in the week, the Douglas County Fire Department and Douglasville, Georgia Police Department heard about the accident we had involving our employees down here. And they got together as a community. And they raised over six thousand dollars for these individuals. And it's just, it just warms my heart to know. We've taken care of them here as a family, but there's outreach around the state. And the support and the love shown for these, these employees and their families has just been overwhelming. And I'm happy to report that tomorrow, or sometime between eleven and twelve, our last employee will be going home. So just so glad to hear that. The monthly hotspot cleanup for August will take place in August twenty-third through the twenty-seventh, and will be in the area from North Lee Street to Springfield Drive between East Cranford and East Moore. And that will include Springfield Drive, Clover Drive, North Troop Street, and Charlton Street. Once again, these monthly cleanups are incredible. We're removing tons of debris. Folks are getting involved in their neighborhoods, and that's what it's all about. So we'll continue with those. I will be leaving after this meeting to go to Savannah because my classes start at nine in the morning. So if you have any problems, I'll be there. Just call me, hunt me down. And I also wanted to just take a moment to, again, thank you for the work session Tuesday night, from hearing from Mr. Dennis Wise on Cyclops and what he's bringing to our community. If you have any further questions, I think he's still here in the very back. So I think that shows the commitment to our community on his behalf. He came back for the meeting tonight. So again, thank you for that. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have this evening.
Mr. Mayor, in regards to Douglas County and what they did for our men and women, is there any way that we can do a special thank you from Mayor and Council?
Oh, absolutely. That's what I'm in hopes that will happen. I'm hoping we'll see some folks from the city of Douglasville this weekend in our meetings and make sure we thank them and let them know how appreciative we are. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Item eleven, council comments. As I glance around the room, anybody that wants to add anything to tonight's meeting? As I glance around the room, anybody that wants to add anything to tonight's meeting?
Well, I would, because of the fact I've been getting quite a few questions, and I would just like to ask that our city manager, hopefully, and maybe with the city attorney, if we could get some kind of statement or something to put out about the executive order 13985 and about the Americans Relief Plan money, at least tell the citizens something. A lot of them got so much confusion about what's going on, and some of them saying, is it here? How are we going to, what we going to do with it? I've asked them to call to City Hall, and from what I'm hearing, that's not happening. They won't call, but I have gotten quite a few questions. And I was just wondering if we could at least put some kind of notice out to let them know something. I think I've been giving, I don't want to give them the wrong information, so, you know, maybe we could introduce them to the minute so that they could put something out. Y'all could get together and put something out, please.
Thank you for bringing that up, Councilwoman. I continue to meet with Mr. Robinson and Mr. Ryan's on that executive order. Mr. Robinson is our last meeting. He's continued to find a little more detail and information that we can put out. It's just right now, it's truly not available unless I'm not talking to Mr. Robinson this week. So he's continuing to look as well as we continue to look. So what he's presented thus far to you is what's available right now. But we'll continue to do that, and we can get a little more definitive information. Absolutely happy to get that out. And I'll make contact with Mr. Robinson. Like I said, we've been meeting with him and Mr. Ryan's on that executive order, so absolutely.
Now, they're not the only two now. Just know that. They're not the only ones.
Right, but there's the two I meet with.
Yeah, they talk to them. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Mark, thank you. Counsel, any other comment? Seeing none, I'll go.
Have to recycle. Sir, will you stand, please? Because I'm all about the children. If, when you get this approved, next year will you be responsible with us with the back-to-school program for this? That's what I'm about, the children. And I want, we want to get it, hear you say it in oath, so that I can come to you and ask for some money.
I told you that I'd come back.
Our company policy is that until we have an operating location, until it's in operation movement, we, you know, we don't join the Chamber of Commerce or any of those things until we actually are in a marketplace.
This is not the Chamber of Commerce. This is happening to children within the city of Valdosta.
So what I'm saying, when we're in operation, we certainly can discuss that.
You will be a part of it.
We certainly will discuss it. I can't make a promise like that because I don't have the authority, but certainly.
Yeah, but I do, I did hear you say we'll discuss it.
Yes.
And that low watermark is 100 customers, correct?
Yes.
That's what you got to get to.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, one further comment before we adjourn to, what Mark was referring to is the Georgia Municipal Association Convention. Your council people, your mayor, never come anywhere close to claiming we know everything, so we're going there for further education and a little fellowship, and it's a great weekend, great weekend of learning as well. Everybody has signed up for classes. I think I got one every day and multiple on two days, and then the Hub City Mayor's meeting as well. And then they nominated me to be their voting delegate, and I don't think I knew that that was happening, so I will do our best, do my best to represent as well, come back on Tuesday night as well. With that being said, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Second. All in favor?
All right.
Thank you, everybody.